...local news media and posted at the meeting location 24 hours prior to the meeting. Executive session, public body may hold a closed, hold a meeting closed to the public for one of the more following reasons: Discussion of negotiations, incident to propose contract arrangements or proposed purchase or sale of property, receipt of legal advice with illegal advice related, opinion, threat, or potential claims, other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, settlement of legal claims, or the position of public aid to see another adversary situation involving the assertion against the agency of a claim. USCBM CIP MOU between Jasper County and the 14th Circuit Solicitor, tax map numbers 087-00-05-008 and 087-00-05-009, and discussion of matters relating to proposed location expansion or the provision of services encouraging location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by a public body. Prospect update, Project Mr. C, Project Veggie, S&amp;P Produce, Inc. This time we'll call for a motion to go into executive session, please.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Joe, you got some motion to make out of executive session?
I think so as well.
David, do you have a motion?
I'm sorry, sir?
There wasn't a motion coming out of executive session.
No, okay.
At this time we'll call for a motion to come out of executive session, please.
I'll make a motion to come out of executive session at this time.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. At this time, you stand for our pledge of allegiance followed by invocation.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our most kind and gracious heavenly fathers, we humbly bow our heads to your holy ears, thank you and praise you for all of your many blessings that you so generously bestow upon us. We thank you, dear Lord, for our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. We thank you, dear Lord, for the opportunity to be here today to serve our community. We ask a special blessing, dear Lord, for those in the path of Hurricane Helene, the families that lost loved ones, who lost their homes or their livelihoods, dear Lord. We just pray that you'll wrap your arms around them, support them, love them, and help them heal, dear Lord. We thank you, dear Lord, for the opportunity to allow many others to help those in need. We know, dear Lord, there are a lot of unspoken prayers, a lot of challenges. We just ask, dear Lord, for your guidance, your wisdom, and your mercy. Pray that everything that we do will be pleasing in your sight. We ask all of these things in your holy and precious name. Amen.
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 I'd like to welcome everybody this afternoon. It's good to see you. Thank you for being with us. We will start by getting approval of our consent agenda, please. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to approve 19, 20, 21, and 22 of the consent agenda.
19 through 22?
Yes.
And why don't we make the 16, A, B, and C, and D? Okay, make a motion for approval with those changes?
I'd like to make a motion, approve the consent agenda with the following changes.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And a motion for the regular agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the regular agenda with the removal of item number eight and amending item number 13 to be a public hearing only.
And then the emergency preparedness?
And then add to there the res- motion to add the resolution proclamation declaring the conditional state of emergency in Jasper County due to Hurricane Milton.
And what number were we going to add that proclamation to? That would be?
Item 7A, Chair.
7A, that's right. Okay. Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, and we'll start with presentations. Chief Wells, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. Give us just a moment. We're going to try and pull up a quick PowerPoint presentation for y'all. Okay, we'll try and, we recognize that your time is important, but the information within the briefing is also as equally important. So, this is just a quick summation of what we encountered during Hurricane Helene, but the challenge here is that while Hurricane Helene is gone, Hurricane Milton is knocking. And so, within that, it is currently a CAP-5 located in the Gulf of Mexico, north of the Bay of Camp Peche. The forecast track is east, northeast toward Florida, the Tampa Bay area. So, what they are predicting for our particular area is rainfall potential of possibly one to two inches Thursday and Friday with tropical storm-force winds. At about a 10 to 20% higher tide cycles are increasing throughout the week prompting possible coastal flood advisories. As of 5 o'clock, we received notice that the National Weather Service has now issued tropical storm watches and tidal surge watches for not only Jasper County but Beaufort County as well. Our challenges with this approaching storm is that if we encounter tropical storm-force winds returning this week, the trees and limbs that were weakened by Helene that have not come down could subsequently fail or collapse. So, with that, we could have additional impacts to our power lines and grids, communications. But the timing of the event could lead to operational challenges, and y'all have already addressed the consideration for a state of emergency. The picture you see on the left is actually the standard nighttime lights that were before Hurricane Helene. If you look at the right, that big swath of darkened area is the actual power grid failure that was knocked out from Florida through North Carolina. So, Hurricane Helene, again, came onshore as a CAP-4 in the bend of Florida. The path was to carry it northward through Atlanta. The forecast for our area was on the fringe of the wind field, and the rainfall rates were forecasted two to three inches. Just so that we know, the assessor's office have had done a damage assessment, and that damage assessment is still ongoing. And right now, private property damages is about $5.868 million. And again, they continue on with their assessments. Again, the storm had a deviation. The National Weather Service indicated about 50 miles. When we were tracking it in the emergency operations center that Thursday night, it appeared that it was about 120 miles, but we're not professional meteorologists. So, with that shift in deviation in the track, that actually pushed us further into the wind field and brought just a slight increase in the stronger winds and wind gusts. It also increased our rainfall. So, the gusting winds that were forecast for Thursday night into Friday morning, as you can see on the left, we should have been in about the 30, 30 to 38 mile an hour wind rains. You can see offshore that, again, winds over water are a higher because they don't need the resistance that they get from land. And so, what the National Weather Service has provided for us, as you can see on the right, is that we were in the mid-50s, and the highest gust that they could record came from Marine Corps Air Station Beaufort and Savannah Hilton Head International Airport, 75 and 76 mile an hour respectively. So, unofficially, our highest gust is about 70 miles an hour from what we can understand and from the data that we've been able to gather. The sustained winds, we were forecasted 25 to 26 miles an hour. Based on the data that we were able to obtain, it was 28 to 30 miles an hour. So, not much of an increase in the sustained, but the gusting was a little bit higher. So, the rainfall rate, instead of the diminished amount, the eastern half of the county experienced about three inches of rain, while the western half, and that was just based on how the bands flowed through the county, received about five and a half inches of rain that night. So, unfortunately, damages were sustained to the Tillman Fire Station. As you can see, a beautiful, large oak tree decided to take up residency within the apparatus bay. Both apparatus are okay. One, the tanker sustains just minor cosmetic issues. We've had to relocate them, those pieces of apparatus out of that station. The tree collapsed into the structure, has caused some apparatus bay damage to the roof and exterior wall. Toxic mold intrusion is, again, in the living quarters because the root ball actually came up and where the location of the septic tank and field are, it's in that immediate vicinity of the root ball. So, there could be some potential septic tank issues. We do have the permission by the insurance company to initiate tree work. However, we've got to explore those costs, and we anticipate that those costs to remove that tree are going to exceed $10,000 in accordance with our procurement policy. So, we'll get with the chief procurement officers whether or not, based on what is going on here, whether or not we can do an emergency acquisition and just execute a contract. We have been working with MBCon on a previous issue for the station, but this kind of drives that a little bit farther forward for addressing. The Cozinhachi Fire Station, we are working on the property acquisition that is underway. The county attorney has teed up documents for execution on the acquisition, and MBCon has an agreement that will be brought forward tonight for consideration on architectural services for the replacement of that fire station as well. Moving on to Tarboro Fire Station, a while back, November 2016, we received a land donation by Sarah Morgan and Beth Gregory. They are the grandmother and mother of Chairman Councilman Sauls, and I don't recall ever having an opportunity to dedicate that land for the future development of a fire station. So, we would like to work on getting that solidified and brought forward. So, we'll work on a dedication ceremony for that property, and we'll be happy to let you all know more about how it progresses in. We have worked with FEMA and South Carolina Emergency Management Division. Those agencies were actually in the county on Saturday, October 5. We received unofficial notification Sunday, October 6, at about 5:30, that we were granted inclusion into the federal individual assistance declaration. However, I have not received the official document from FEMA and the state of South Carolina. As soon as that comes out, we will certainly be publishing that. Quite honestly, we would encourage our citizens to check with FEMA. They may be able to begin their registration process even prior to us getting the formal documentation, especially if it is listed that we are included in the individual assistance. So, we are going to work with those agencies to establish a disaster assistance center, and we will provide updates and publish those as soon as possible. One of the things that we do want to take a moment to address, and that is, if you look at the governor's press release pertaining to the expedited individual assistance, it clearly indicates that that was for obvious reasons in the upstate. And when we talk about obvious reasons, we're talking about towns that are completely and utterly destroyed. Their infrastructure is completely destroyed. There are fatalities associated with their destruction. They had substantial ongoing search and rescue missions. So, when we talk about obvious destruction, they had encountered that. Those particular geographical areas, western Tennessee, I'm sorry, eastern Tennessee, western North Carolina, northeastern Georgia, and what we call Region 1 out of South Carolina, 24, it was 24 to 36 hours prior to Helene coming into that area, they had already received nine to 10 inches of rain. And as Helene came into that area with a track deviation, it dumped an additional, I want to say 15 to 20 inches of rain into that area, resulting in catastrophic flash flooding that precipitated their expedited declaration. Nonetheless, we actually worked with our assessor's office through the documentation process. There were some internal challenges between us and reporting it to the state. Those have since been addressed, but we have been able to move forward on getting our declarations. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
No questions, but I just want to thank you for getting the information out because there was a lot of misleading information going out, saying that the county was not doing nothing, or remember when you go to the polls in November? What you going to remember? That it wasn't our time, and we had to wait to send this stuff in? It's just amazing how people throw themselves that stuff for a vote. They make it seem like nobody was doing anything. And they, a few of them called me, so I calmed them down. But we need to stop doing stuff like that. Call the appropriate people. Mr. Fulgham is in this office 24/7 if you really want to know the truth. So, we thank you, Rusty and Mr. Fulgham, for what you did.
Mr. Count.
I just want to say thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. I saw a lot of people, and really, sending your, some people to North Carolina to help out, it was a very good thing.
Yes, sir. We've had two, we had three deployments. We deployed two different teams into, I believe it was Pickens and Lawrence County, to serve those communities that were definitely destroyed. And then, we also sent a, our emergency management coordinator to Greenwood County Emergency Operations Center, and he served in assisting Greenwood County Emergency Management in mitigating their challenges.
Is that a, something that you do just for the good of it, or does there an agreement someplace along the line?
So, a lot of these tasking orders start out with the South Carolina Firefighter Mobilization Act, but during times of declaration. So, we just can't arbitrarily send them. And so, we receive a resource request. We determine whether or not we can fulfill that request while managing our own challenges, and then we receive a tasking order. That tasking order from the state of South Carolina is basically the receipt that we get that will allow us to be reimbursed under federal guidelines for their time and their deployment. So, it's not that, you know, on the forefront, yes, we pay for it, but on the back end, we will get reimbursed for that. The emergency management is actually working through a national qualification system. Myself and Mr. Hughes sit on the committee for that, and we are working toward national qualifications so that if this disaster were to strike anywhere else in the United States or U.S. territories, there is the potential that our certifications would allow us to go and serve in those roles and assist other states and territories.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chief Wells, I just want to thank you and your staff, as well as dispatch sheriff's office, assessor's office, for their commitment to the county for something that was truly unexpected that night.
Yes, sir.
And thank you, and the continual efforts that we're going to have from Helene into weeks to come.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. Appreciate everything you do, as always, and everybody did a great job.
Senator Allen.
Thank you. I tell you, it's really mind-blowing if you look at, and I don't want to call out any specific individuals or organizations, but there were so many different churches and organizations and individuals throughout our county that really stepped up to the plate when we had our own challenges. And I mean, it's even being continued to this day, sending supplies not only to South Carolina but North Carolina, and it really shows you what our community is made of, and that's the people. And we do have good people, and you can see it every day if you look around on what efforts are being made and the results that are coming as well. It's really amazing to see how our community is banded together to provide assistance to people who've lost everything they've had throughout our state as a result of Helene. It's really been amazing. So, congratulations to everybody this afternoon. So, congratulations to everybody that's done that work. It's been amazing. Okay, next, we'll move right on into Resolutions. Eight, Mr. Tetter, consideration of the resolution R-2024-29 to authorize to Jasper County Administrator to execute a memorandum of understanding. Oh, no, we need to, we remove.
Seven eight was the proclamation for the hurricane.
Oh, yes, yes.
But they're both mine.
Yeah. Let's back up and do seven eight, the emergency proclamation. My apologies.
Thank you. I'm the chairman, members of council. Thank you for having us here. Yesterday, as events were unfolding in golf, and the chief was watching Hurricane Milton develop, we had a phone call between myself and Mr. Fulgham and the chief about being proactive, and how fast it was moving, and how uncertain things are, and how much, how little time we might have to deal with this. So, we prepared for your consideration and condition of proclamation. We're on the outskirts right now, but it would take a lot of movement, just as we had the week before with Helene, the track turned over and increased the effects. This is our standard emergency declaration that we can use for hurricanes and talk about what needs to be done in case things get bad. It becomes effective the way this is written, not as we usually do effective on its enactment, but it's conditioned upon the occurrence of two, either of two events. One being the declaration by the governor of the state of emergency that includes Jasper County. The other is the declaration of a hurricane warning, not a watch for hurricane warning, to Jasper County by the National Weather Service, in which case it depends on the fact that the emergency operations plan goes into effect as they do in a normal emergency. In order to do this, because it wasn't on the agenda over 24 hours, the council, I've written into this, finding that there are exigent circumstances that prevent us from having a 24-hour notice of public hearing because we might be too late to be able to respond on Tuesday night. But it provides in effect that the Freedom of Information Act 30-40, I have to keep looking at it, 30-4-80A allows for a two-thirds majority of the council to approve an emergency in addition to the agenda and the consideration of this proclamation, which if you see fit to do, would become effective again only upon the declaration of an emergency by the governor or the hurricane. I'm happy to try and answer any questions.
Any questions from council?
No.
It's time to call for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the emergency declaration in case there is one needed.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. And Mr. Tetter, you're up next.
Yes, sir. This is an inducement resolution. Some time ago, we began talking about a project called Project Veggie, which is an economic development to go out to the Cypress Ridge area. We now know the name of the company is further on down the line. An inducement resolution allows certain expenses of the developer, investor, to include them in the project when we do it. This one allows for those actions taken by the developer at the time that we agree to begin entering into the discussions with them on the economic development to include those costs in their investment. Again, we'll have a first reading of the ordinance, a couple of items from now, but this is the standard way to start qualifying things. We're just kind of compressing the timeframe on this one. The only date that's left to be inserted in here is the date that I have to research to find out when we first discuss it in executive session. I'm happy to answer any questions. I'll give you more information if you want about the incentive package that we've been discussing when we get to the MCIP FLO agreement.
Any questions, Ms. Barbour? Any questions? It's time to call for a motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion to have R-2024-31 committing to negotiation or a fee in lieu of taxes.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. And next, Ms. Kimberly Burgess, consideration of resolution R-2024-30, the liquidation of three surplus retired response vehicles.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. This is a resolution declaring certain emergency services vehicles to, to be no longer necessary or useful to the county and to allow, to allow us to dispose of these three pieces, three vehicles. There are two, there's a 2008 General Motors 2500 chassis type Fraser built ambulance, a 2008 General Motors, another one of the same kind, just a different VIN number. And then, the third one is a 1993 Ford F-350 service body four by four regular car cab. So, we'd like your approval to declare these as surplus and to allow us to sell them. And then, the funds would be put in, back into the general fund.
I'll make a motion that we consider this resolution R-2024-30, the liquidation of all three of the surplus, surplus B retired.
I do have one amendment to what I just said. Chief Wells would like to...
Yeah, it's the last second thing that was brought forward. We didn't, we didn't plan on, this, this package was put together long before Helene was, was an issue. One of our staff members brought forward a question. Obviously, we can't answer it. That's within y'all's purview. Given the amount of destruction that has occurred up in Georgia, Tennessee, North Carolina, over South Carolina, should there be a department that has been absolutely decimated and has no equipment and needs that equipment? Would the county consider the opportunity to donate? Again, I didn't, I didn't know the best way to bring it forward, but again, this package was brought forward long before Hurricane Helene, but I didn't want to...
I was going to bring it forward.
So, we would need a motion for approval to donate the three surplus vehicles if that request arose before they were sold?
Just if, if there is, if there is a department that is absolutely decimated...
Okay, yeah, I think...
And needs equipment to immediately get back into service and serve it.
We should do that. I agree.
So, it says, the resolution does say that, that we're, the county staff is authorized and directed to sell or otherwise dispose of the property in accordance with...
So, that would cover...
So, that could potentially...
Give us one of the warranty, that may be an option.
Of course. We hope that is an option.
Yes.
Most definitely.
Are these fully amendments? These are body and...
Two of them are just, and one could be considered a light rescue. One of the, all of them need some level of mechanical work. They, they are operational, but...
It's better than nothing.
Yes. They don't, they don't need armed response things.
And we would be notified if that takes place, that...
Absolutely, sir.
Great. At this time, we'll call for a motion for approval, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can I just make a suggestion that y'all move to a point with the amendment to include donation to a governmental entity in that part of disposition?
Call for a motion, please, to include the amendment?
Make a motion that we approve this item with the amendment, given that we could donate to a government entity.
Motion, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Fulgham, this is a public hearing only pursuant to SE Code Section 4-37-30 relating to the referendum to be held at the general election on November 5th, 2024 on the question of the imposition of a sales and use tax to fund certain transportation needs of South Carolina, Jasper County, South Carolina. A public hearing only.
Mr. Chairman, yes, this is a public hearing only to remain compliant with statute. Mr. Tetter advises us that the election commission will also have a separate public hearing this Thursday in this room at 5:30 PM for the same purpose. The referendum is on November the 5th, the road repair and green belt for water and land protection sales and use tax referendum. We do have an educational piece that's available for everyone. If there's a QR code on the educational piece, if you scan that, you will go to this information on our website. It gives you a detailed listing of all the projects proposed in the referendum. Two questions. The first one's ask the voter to consider the imposition of a 1% sales tax for a 15-year term, proposing to generate $470 million, 80% of that, or 376 million going to 16 individual road projects that are flashing in front of you very quickly. 20% of that, or 94 million, to go to green belt, which is identified as land and water protection projects. There'll also be a question for the voters to consider the county's ability to bond $150 million of those funds to complete those projects in a quick fashion. The roadway projects are categorized in construction projects, intersection improvements, roadway widening, interchange improvements, and the green belt projects are described and identified as including but not limited to land acquisition for conservation, purchasing conservation easements, creating passive and active green spaces, and protecting natural resources, agricultural or heritage landscapes, and scenic corridors. So, we do have some good educational material here that's on the website and available for handouts. Don't have any other information to present to you. That's the sum and summary. Mr. Chairman, just respectfully requesting that you'll open and conduct the public hearing.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open the floor for a public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak on this specific topic, please feel free to do so. Public hearing going twice, public hearing going three times, and public hearing is now closed. Next, Kim Burgess, public hearing and consideration of the third reading of ordinance 0-2024-22 to amend Jasper County ordinance 0-2023-09, fiscal year 2024 Jasper County budget, to provide for amendments to the budget and carryover approving lapsing funds to fiscal year 2025 to amend the Jasper County ordinance ending in 1.3 for fiscal year 25 Jasper County budget to provide for amendments to the budget resulting from carryover of approved lapsing funds from fiscal year 2024, to amend certain revenue items, to incorporate the reclassification of certain line items, to amend for the fiscal year 2025 expenditures, the inclusion of additional appropriations and matters related there to...
Thank you, Chairman Sauls. Members of council, this is a public hearing as well as the third reading for the budget amendment for carryover of lapsing funds as well as some, some changes. There have been no changes to the, to the dollar amounts from the second reading. There was some changes to the line item, the first line item that says in the revenue, the $150,000 change. That was revised from the previous version. It now basically says just to remove those ARPA grant funds for the Pratt, for the Pratt Memorial Library, primarily because that is a grant fund. And as we talked previously, those are recorded in the grant funds and then reconciled and then carried forward into the general fund. So, a few, one other change that was made is in the actual ordinance itself, and that would be in the revenue paragraph. That was, the verbiage was tightened up to make it, to make it more clear, and those were really the only changes made from the second reading into the third reading. If you have any questions or...
Any questions, Ms. Barbara? Mr. Kemp?
No, we've been through them all.
No questions.
At this time, we'll call for a motion for approval, please.
We have a public hearing?
Oh, thank you for reminding me. At this time, we'll open the floor for a public hearing. Anybody wishing to address council on this specific matter, please feel free to do so. Public hearing going twice, three times, public hearing is now closed, and we'll call for a motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion to create third reading of ordinance 0-2024-22 to amend the Jasper County ordinance 2023-09.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next, Mr. Andrew Fulgham, public hearing of ordinance 20-24-23, authorizing the sale to S&amp;P Produce, Inc., of a 10-acre parcel, more or less being subdivided out of the original 40-acre parcel identified as parcel B-1A.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of council, you had it on your agenda for a potential public hearing in second reading. I understand that you've taken off the second reading. Public hearing is to invite a public comment about the sale of 10 acres, and that's in Cypress Ridge Industrial Park for S&amp;P. Also, S&amp;P Produce, Inc., formerly known as Project Veggie, which is an economic development project proposing to spend $2.9 million and create 19 new jobs. Be happy to answer any questions that you have, but tonight is public hearing only.
Okay, at this time, we'll open the floor for a public hearing. Anybody wishing to address council on a specific item, please feel free to do so. Public hearing going twice, three times, public hearing is now closed. And next, we have Mr. David Tetter, consideration of first reading of an MCIP and FLO agreement with S&amp;P Produce, Inc.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I mentioned earlier, we'll pass the inducement resolution, S&amp;P Economic Development Project of Cypress Ridge. The vote just explained they're buying 10 acres of land. They're going to invest $2.9 million. They are contract, they are agreeing at a minimum to provide at least 19 jobs within the next five years. The first phase of this is what they're talking about here with these 19 jobs. The project itself is, has room for expansion, phase two and phase three, which we hope will be utilized. The basic terms of this agreement, it locks in the middle age rate. It doesn't provide an economic incentive on this, other than the land that we're selling to them. They have other incentives available to the Department of Commerce and other programs. This is fair enough, to build to set up a multi-county park and then do the field.
Any questions, Ms. Barbour?
None.
Mr. Kemp?
No.
Mr. Rowland?
No questions.
At this time, we'll call for a motion for approval, please.
Make a motion that this be the first reading of an MCIP and FLO agreement with S&amp;P Produce, Inc.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, Ms. Lisa Wagner, consideration of first reading of an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of Jasper County, so as to transfer three parcels located at 1607, 1613, and 1619 Deerfield Road bearing tax map numbers 029-00-02-011, as well as parcel ending in 099, as well as 095 from rural preservation zone to residential zone for the official zoning map of Jasper County.
Good evening, Chairman and council members. A property owner who owns the property in and in 100 at 1607 Deerfield Road presented an application to the planning department to have the property rezoned. During the planning commission's review, they noticed that parcel 099 and 095, 1613 and 1619 Deerfield Road, would probably be faced with the same challenges as the parcel owner. So, they, they've recommended that those other two parcels be submitted with this application for your consideration to rezone to residential. The property owner at 1607 Deerfield Road, he has no intention of developing the property except for a single-family residence, but he wishes to place a mobile home there, and the rural preserv, is currently zoned rural preservation, which requires 25 feet... the rural preserv, is currently zoned rural preservation, which requires 25 feet setbacks on each side. The residential zoning district would only be 10 feet, and that would allow him to place his front door to Deerfield Road, which is also a requirement of the Jasper County zoning ordinance. So the comprehensive plan, the future land use map, does identify this as an urban transition area, which are pockets of unincorporated Jasper County that are partially or entirely surrounded by either the city of Hardyville or the town of Ridgeland, and for areas that experience new development or redevelopment within the urban transition zones, consideration should be given to working with the adjacent municipality for annexation. But again, this is just for single-family residents. And the adjacent parcels are zoned rural preservation and residential, and the municipality is shown in red on this map. And then Highway 321 is how all three of these properties are accessed, and that's a two-lane state-maintained highway classified as a major arterial. So the planning commission does recommend, again, that all three of the properties be rezoned to residential.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Any questions, Ms. Clark?
None.
Mr. Kemp?
Yes. You, in your report, you said that these were subdivided at one time.
So the three properties, the one ending in 095, it's 2.86 acres, the one at 099 is 1.06 acres, and the property ending in 100 is 1.08 acres. So there, those were a total of five acres. Those five acres came out of the larger tract behind it at some point. So that's how the five acres was zoned rural preservation, and then there's been these three properties at some point that was subdivided.
Does a, will the density change with the zoning?
The density...
I mean, could they put, he intends, I always like the word intend.
So with residential, the minimum lot size would be a half acre, but in this case, none of these properties will support a second mobile home because that, or a second residence of any kind, because that would be a conditional use, and they can't meet the conditions.
Thank you.
You answered a question before I had to answer, and it was basically with the annexation there, with them putting a mobile home there, it stays better in rural, unincorporated Jasper because you couldn't put one in the city proper if annexed, so that question is answered for me.
Yes.
This time we'll call for a motion for approval, please.
I make a motion that we approve the first reading of an ordinance to amend the zoning map of the three parcels located at 1607, 1613, and 1619 Deerfield Road.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Ms. Burgess, consideration of approval or acceptance of the McMillan, Tazden, and Smith contract for architectural design of the Cusahatchie Fire Station.
Thank you, Chairman, members of council. Yes, we have a contract for, from McMillan, Tazden, Smith Architecture for the design of the Cusahatchie Fire Station not to exceed $727,333. The, this, the design of the fire station is included in the work authorization from MBCon that was approved by the council on October 16th of 2023 and executed on October 17th of 2023. McMillan, Tazden, Smith Architecture is included in the Jasper County indefinite delivery contract list of providers. Therefore, this is a, it meets the procurement. It has already been approved through the work authorization, and staff is requesting that the council approve and accept the McMillan-Smith Architecture contract for the design of the fire sta, Cusahatchie Fire Station not to exceed $727,333 and authorize the county administrator to execute the contract with McMillan-Paston-Smith. The funding of this particular contract will be from the unassigned general fund balance of the cash carryforward until other financing is determined for the entire fire station. I do want to say that this contract has been reviewed and negotiated multiple times, back and forth with county attorney as well. So he has reviewed it and agree, or has given his approval of it for you to, for you to approve. And we also have members of MBCon here if you have any questions.
Any questions, Ms. Clark?
None.
Mr. Rouse?
No questions.
Mr. Kemp?
No questions.
This time we'll call for a motion for approval.
Make a motion that this be consideration of approval and acceptance of McMillan, Tazden, and Smith contract for architectural design of the Cusahatchie Fire Station.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm here for the next one.
Ma'am?
I'm here for the next one, if you, 16A.
16A, approval and acceptance of a proposal from Serez Environmental for Disaster Debris Management and Recovery Services.
Yes, sir. We, Jasper County advertised for proposals to be received for disaster debris management and recovery until the 25th day of July at 3:00 PM. We received eight proposals, and the names of the proposals were read publicly as provided for in the procurement ordinance. A selection committee consisting of Fire Chief and Emergency Management Director Russell Wells, Deputy Chief Darren Bond, Emergency Management Coordinator Richard Hughes, and Lieutenant David Peterson, who is Planning Section Chief Matt to review and score the proposals, and the, I think, I don't know how to say it, the Series Environmental proposal received the highest score of the eight proposals. Therefore, based on the recommendation and scoring of the review committee, staff recommends that the council approve and accept the proposal provided by Series Environmental and authorize the county administrator to negotiate and enter into a contract after review by the county attorney with Series Environmental for Disaster Debris Management and Recovery Services.
Mr. Kemp?
Chief, could you just give us a rundown of what this actually is? Just to, I don't need 10 minutes, but somebody, just tell us what they do and why we have this.
Okay, so like we encountered with Elaine, there are... Can you hear me now?
Thank you, sir.
How about now? Much better.
Good try.
So these contracts are similar to what we encountered in Matthew and even here of recent with the trees that are coming down. They, you know, if we encountered in a larger magnitude, and our ability with SEDOT, Jasper County Public Works, is overrun, overburdened. These contractors can come in, they do cut and toss, and then actually will come into the right of ways, they'll start clearing the right of ways out, so our residents can actually then, on their private property, kind of move the debris to the right of way. They clean the right of way in three passes, and then they take it to a debris management site, which we've already identified and certified through the Department of Environmental Services. So this, this is what that contract allows us to do. It allows us to enact it should the debris of veget, total destruction, should we encounter it.
How come there's two different contracts?
So, with, with, yes, so within that, there's debris management, and that's the picking up and the moving of all of that. We don't feel that it would be prudent to have the same company monitor what they're picking up and managing, and, so that's, that's where there's two separate contracts.
Thank you very much.
Yes, this is the same program we have for those of us that were here and stayed for Hurricane Matthew back in October of 2017. We did the same program when there was a lot of people who moved to San Antonio not have experienced that, but it's vital to recovery, especially when you have a major storm come through and you got trees knocked down and power lines and everything else, and you can't even navigate.
They'll come in and do the first push to the roads.
So we need a separate motion on that for approval, and at this time I'll call for a motion for approval, please.
I'd like to make an approval to approve and accept the proposal from Series Environmental for Disaster Debris Management and Recovery Services.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next is the approval and acceptance of a proposal from Tetra Tech for Disaster Debris Monitoring and Recovery Services.
Make a motion that we approve the acceptance of the proposal from Tetra Tech for Disaster Debris Monitoring and Recovery Service.
Motion, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next, Item C, approval and acceptance of the Guaranteed Maximum Price Proposals Contract from MBCon Construction for Pratt Memorial Library and Temporary Library Upfit.
Yes, sir, these are two, thank you again, these are two different guaranteed maximum price contracts. The first one is for the Pratt Memorial Library Upfit, and that amount is $3,854,130. This includes a full-time on-site superintendent from MBCon for this project. The work authorization is actually $4,750,000, which includes $895,870 for other project costs for which the county is responsible, and will pay directly to those providers, but this is the construction cost that the county will pay MBCon for, for this particular project, for the Pratt Memorial Library. There's a second one for the temporary library outfit, that's at 112 Weatherby Road, and the amount of this one is $183,296. So we would, and both of these, we plan to pay a portion of with the American Rescue Plan Funds or the ARPA funds. There will be some additional financing that will be necessary for those, and we would like your approval for both the, both guaranteed maximum price contracts and to allow or authorize the county administrator to negotiate and execute all necessary agreements for both GMPs. Again, I have representatives from MBCon here if you have any questions.
Mr. Kemp?
Yes. When MBCon did this guaranteed price, how set in stone is that? Because I do not know, I do not, I saw what they based it on, and I'm kind of scary about that from past history.
This is Chris Hans with MBCon, and Shane Stevens with MBCon, they can provide you more of the details to your individual question.
Yeah, so the guaranteed maximum price in regards to being set in stone, we do have contingencies included in that number as part of our contract, then 5%, so if anything should arise out of our control, or things that arise based on subcontractors, we do have 5% to cover those costs, and then the county additionally has 3% of their own contingency should things change within the 4.75 million work authorization.
Well, I just, I don't understand how we're going to get an architect in to do something based on another architect that you based your money on.
So it's the same architect. Woods Dandy Architecture did the plans from start to finish. The plans are complete, 95% complete, and that's what we based our pricing, subcontractor pricing off of.
But aren't we, aren't we, isn't this the account that we're trying to, maybe I'm getting confused here. Was this for a contract for the price? You're going to have an architect now to do the final plans, correct?
No, sir. So the final plans for the library are complete. The approval for the architect, McMillan-Paston-Smith, was for the fire station in the future that will start soon. So the library plans have been completed.
Who's the architect for that?
Woods Dandy Architecture.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. This time we'll call for a motion for approval.
Make a motion that this be accepted for approval.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, for my interruption, a second. A few moments ago, we all approved the other contract under item 16. I believe Ms. Clark made the motion, but we failed to catch who seconded that. You voted all in favor, we just couldn't catch who seconded the Cusahatchie Fire Station motion.
Mr. Rouse?
Rouse did.
I think Mr. Rouse, I think Mrs. Clark had a motion, but then that motion got changed by Mr. Rouse. He presented the entire motion with the...
We're just trying to get the ministry.
But I don't know who seconded it.
I don't know who seconded it.
I think Mrs. Clark did.
I did.
She seconded Mr. Rouse's motion.
Go to the video.
Okay. I think we just wanted to clarify.
Okay, now, moving on, we have the approval of renewal of annual contract with Invisio for Plans, Analytics, and Public Dashboard Software.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I'm trying to switch the computer here real quickly in your packet. You have a memo, it was prepared by Ms. Williams, my assistant, on Invisio. This is the data analytics software that we spoke of and we reviewed a little bit with you at your last retreat. The dollar amount for this annual contract renewal requesting your approval on is $28,875, and I'll give you a brief overview of what the software does for us. That's what I mentioned to the council in an email several weeks ago, that we're proposing to put this data on the website and live. This is a combination of about two years' worth of work. All departments in the county that report ultimately to the county administrator produce some sort of a monthly report, and we're going by department and digitizing all that information so that we can track it. This data analytics is the very first step in accumulating all the data, and then from that, you can use the software to move into performance management in which you do strategic planning and indicate the key performance indicators of the departments that you want to tie to your goals, the county council, and then we can measure that for you real time. So you'll be able to digitally show what you're doing each month, and then also show how that's matching your goals. I'll just scroll through here real quickly. This is some of the emergency services data that we collect, so that, it's called a dashboard for each of these, so it's kind of like driving your car. You glance down at your dashboard, and you can know where you stand, and we can identify trends. They report a lot more information than is reported here, but these are the most important elements that I have determined that I want to look at each month, and we can go through this with council in the future, once you start doing some strategic planning, so that we can make sure that they're, we're tracking the right things that you're interested in as well. But you can see some of the phenomenal numbers and workloads that these folks do. In the Code Enforcement Division, we have it all laid out by month, the different types of citations issued. All this information was generated by the departments, and Ms. Williams has entered it for the last year, and then training each of the department heads how to put it in directly into the system. The IT department tracks when they work on projects, what we would have paid an outside entity to do it versus in-house, also listens, and you can start to see, you know, when they spend the most money each year on different projects, how much they've saved us versus going out in the private sector to hire those services, has their active projects, GIS department, everything from how many new addresses are issued, to how many stolen road signs we have by month. Parks and Recreation tracks the number of users for each of the different community centers, movement in and out per... community centers, movement in and out per month, and how that's done. We don't have all the departments, we just have about half of them put in so far, so there's more to come on this. Planning and building, this is good to embarrass Ms. Wagner while she's right next to me, shows all of the different permits that they do each month, so that we can see the volume of work that her department does, total property values of all the permitting, engineering services, about the number of roads worked, ditches cleaned, tons of solid waste handled, so forth. So we have some of that public works activity, I have some ideas about enhancing some of that, and the Register of Deeds is a really good detailed one, it shows about all the different types of documents that come in, you can see how many mortgages come in, whether your mortgages are slowing down or speeding up, deeds, all those documents, et cetera. And then it also shows the money that comes in, the fees collected for all those types of things, and how those fees are collected, by what manner. And we're just beginning with the airport, with fuel sales, and we'll do activities of aircraft and so forth, so it's a work in progress, but we're going to start to put this information that we have completed on the website, for everybody to take a look at, we'll continue to ramp up and include the other departments, and then when we start to have strategic workshops, we can start to identify more about what your goals are, and try to link the key performance indicators to what you're doing, so we can track that and show the public how you're working towards your goals. So, with all that, I think I've impressed upon you, this is really important to me, this software, it's important to our organization, it's a little pricey, twenty-eight thousand dollars, but I think it's well worth it, and respectfully asking for your consideration to approve it again this year.
Any questions, Ms. Clark?
No questions, if needed.
Mr. Count.
Will this be, is this on there now, or this will be on?
No, sir, it's not on there yet, thinking about how to appropriately put it on the website, because I want to describe what it is and where we're going with it, and not just dump it on there, so I'm going to need a few days to try to wordsmith that, to put it on there, so the general public will understand what it is, and that there's more to come, but very soon.
Thank you.
Mr. Rowl?
And is this just for the, the county offices, not the other constitutionally elected offices, or can they get on it as well?
They're welcome to participate, I've had meetings with them, and said if they want to participate, and do a monthly report, and just start on paper, we're happy to spend the staff time to try to include them as well.
Absolutely, and, and thank you, I think this is definitely well worth it for what we're looking for.
That's great information. Okay, this time, we'll call for a motion for approval.
Make a motion that this contract be approved again for the plans and analytical and public dashboard software.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, next, we have Chief Wells, approval and acceptance of the Medical Control Physician Contract Renewal. Actually, that went... Oh, I'm sorry, that's, that's only considered, um, okay, next, we have Councilmember comment.
Public comment. Yeah, you done, public comment, you have it. That should have been done.
Administrator's report.
Citizen comment, make on page four.
Yeah, I'm looking at, sorry about that, wrong page, a lot of pages to keep up with. Next, we have Public Comment, and Ms. Julie Nichols with the Jasper County Library Board. Welcome, thanks for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council, members of administration, I'm the Chair of the Jasper, Jasper County Library Board of Trustees, and I just wanted to take this opportunity on behalf of my fellow board members, and the constituents of the library, to say thank you for your continued support. We're very excited to get the project started, it feels like we're almost there, and we appreciate the opportunity to serve the community out of the temporary library as well, so that we minimize our disruptions to our serviceability. So again, thank you very much for your continued support, we really appreciate it.
We're as excited as y'all are, and appreciate everything that y'all do, thank you very much. Okay, now, moving on to Administrator's Report, Mr. Fuldrum.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I have my Administrator's Report, a two-week report, I don't need to elaborate, that's just for information purposes, I did want to clarify one thing that we had discussed previously, and that was the grant for S and P Protos, Inc., we have been offered a large grant from the...
I'm going to add.
Department of Agriculture, South Carolina Department of Agriculture, it's a one million dollar grant to help facilitate the siting of the new business in the Cypress region we spoke of before, would appreciate if you would consider a motion to authorize me to accept the grant, and to sign any paperwork associated with receiving the grant and administering the grant, so that we can pass that on to the business.
We have the motion, please.
I make a motion that we accept the grant, and Mr. Fuldrum, along with the attorney, be allowed to accept and sign anything that needs to be, to be sure we don't miss this grant.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Fuldrum. And Councilmember comments, Ms. Clark.
I'm glad to see everybody back online, because I thought Helena was going to wipe everybody out, but thank God, there's a God that knows it all, and now we need to start preparing for Mr. Milton, and who shows up today to our meeting, Milton, we don't want to deal with any Miltons right now. And again, thank Chief Wells for all that he has done, I was all the way in Puerto Rico and talking to him, keeping up with what was going on, and the sun was so beautiful there, so beautiful, so, thank all of you, we are doing the best that we can on this council to keep things moving, and hats off to the administration, we're doing marvelous job, continue.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Mr. Rowl?
Yes, I'd like to echo some of the same things that Ms. Clark was saying, we do thank all the departments for their continued service with Hurricane Helena and the impacts that we did have in our area. I do have a couple questions, and as it pertains to maybe some of the public works, things with the waste centers, and nothing has to be answered tonight, but those folks did a phenomenal job helping with debris removal and different things, but in the event that we have any unpredicted storms in the future, what is the likelihood of having something there to where we could power those sites in the future, where, say if a tornado or the inclement weather got there, that we could power those up, as well as some of our community centers, just in case we can make those, something to better serve those more rural areas of Jasper County. I would also like to thank Creative Church, as well as Kingdom Touch pastors Eric and Pastor Lewis, for opening up their facilities for the citizens of Jasper County to utilize when they didn't have some of the infrastructure in their homes, there, there are times to where we, as the county, are unable to get those things moving, and thank them for stepping up to open up those services for our citizens here. And one thing that I would encourage folks to do is, emergency services does have a phenomenal presentation as it pertains to hurricane preparedness, we are very at the latter end of hurricane season, but I would encourage folks in the future to reach out to those folks and get with them to learn a little bit more about hurricane preparation, and a lot of that does start at home. Other than that, thank you to everyone that helped out, and as well as those citizens that were clearing the roads, that were stepping up before we could get folks out there, thank you.
Mr. Count.
Again, I guess reiterate everything, just like to say that it shows the good in people when you have a disaster, a lot of people stepped up, Kingdom Touch, churches, they just took care of everything until we could get in there. I did have a meeting with, with Lisa, and I went to Charleston County, met with Charleston County Councilman Joe Boykin concerning the moratorium and the green belt, and we had a good discussion there, it was pretty good. We're trying to get it right, and what we're doing is reaching out to people that have done it before, find their mistakes and their problems, and see if we can correct them, we're trying not to reinvent the wheel. Met with the citizens of Abbey Glen concerning flooding, they were very cordial, and they want to work it out, and they were very positive, I want to thank you. I attended the twentieth anniversary of USCB as a university, thinking about that, they're really growing, and we'll go from there. We're wearing pink tonight, and that's for breast cancer awareness, just take a few minutes during your life, during the month, wear pink, something pink, and think about it, and think of all the survivors and all the people that are going through it. And on the Gopher Hill, we went to that, I, I'm, I'm, guess I'm doing the referendum, or educational referendum, I think I put out about two-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred copies of our informational, so, we're getting it out there, and thank you very much.
Thank you all. I, two weeks ago, we had our Southern Carolina Executive Board meeting, working on projects like the one we discussed tonight, people investing in our county, creating capital investment jobs for our citizens, a lot of exciting things happening, one of which you heard tonight, I want to thank Commissioner Weathers with the million-dollar contribution there for, for economic development from the Department of Agriculture, that was big, so, we really appreciate what they're doing as well, and we'll have some other announcements towards the end of the year, is what our goals are, so look for those to be coming soon, we'll have some good news. Had several in-person meetings with staff and citizens, and many conversations about the U-Haul overlay district rezoning, that's a work in progress, trying to get that right, a lot of people have a lot of concerns, so we're looking at addressing those, and we'll be scheduling a workshop within the next couple of weeks, once staff has reviewed some initiatives to bring back to us, Helena's kind of slowed us down a little, but we're still charging forward as, as best we can. The Jasper County Chamber of Commerce Scholarships Off Tournament is going to be December second at Riverton Point, we're excited about that, that's a scholarship tournament where we take those monies and provide those to a graduating senior from each of the high schools in Jasper County, this is our fifteenth year doing that, Justin Ali Baker Scholarship Tournament, so, you'll see a lot of information coming out on that, so please, I encourage you, even if you don't want to play, sponsor a hole maybe, or even a team for that matter, just to contribute towards the cause as well. Speaking of golf, I put a team in for our Jarm fundraiser golf tournament, Sunday before last, I think it was, Mr. Keith, and we had a great turnout, great time, I think they raised over ten thousand dollars.
Of course, two or three, it's certainly...
Yeah, great. I think a couple of nights ago, they had a fundraiser over at Habersham, and raised over seventeen thousand dollars, and year to date, well, the past four months, they've raised over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so kudos to Jarm and their board.
Can I just add one thing?
Sure.
I would like a, a special thank you to go out to Olin with the Public Works Department, we cleared out all the storm debris and threw over our fence in the parking lot, and I just texted Olin, and I said, can you please send a picture of it, and it was gone before the end of the day.
Awesome, 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 y'all doing a phenomenal job, and we're, the county's proud and happy to support and partner with y'all, so, good things to come. We also have, on November twenty-first, our Big Thursday Orscho Roast at the Jasper County Farmers Market, that's always a big time, so mark your calendars for that as well. Some really good news, they're finally starting to repave Highway four sixty-two, I cannot believe it, we have been, we have been working on that as a council for, gosh, at least three years that I know of, really hard, I wrote the permission rate on it last year, and hit every bump, so I think I needed a front end line on my truck when I got through, but I drive that road every morning and every afternoon. They're also working as well on the frontage road north of Ridgeland, all the way to the Cusahatchie exit, it's in terrible condition, I've spoken with our DOT engineer, and seventeen north out of Ridgeland towards Hardyville's going to be coming online soon, as well as the two-seventy-eight up towards Graves, I think that's about six miles of two-seventy-eight, and that'll take place next year, so, I want to thank Mr. Rudy Smith and the Transportation Committee too, because they played a, a big role in, in this as well, trying to get some of our roads repaved and resurfaced, so, some good things happening.
When is the Oshroos?
At this time, I don't think we have anything else, we'll call for a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, stand up, and everybody have a blessed evening. Thanks, y'all.